This session of the Eureka Springs City Council will come to order. The clerk will establish your real call, please.
Here.
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 Yeah.
Here.
Yep.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I would approve.
Second.
Second.
Any additions, deletions, clarifications?
I don't know if you can read it.
Mr. DeVito.
I would like to postpone till the next meeting the item number four on unfinished business, raising the mayor's salary.
Okay.
Does that take a second?
It will from the second.
Can we postpone till May?
I'll postpone to the next meeting.
Can we postpone till May?
I'll postpone it again next meeting, maybe, don't worry about it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And so, Terry, are you the second?
Sure, be happy to.
Anybody else?
That was number four under unfinished.
Unfinished, yes.
Like to postpone item one under new business.
It's already automatic, it's done.
Oh, it's November, okay, never mind.
Any further? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, agenda's changed. Next to be approval of the minutes for March of 25th, 2013.
I approve.
Second.
Second. Any changes, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post. Minister, approved. Next to be commissions, committees, thirty reports on expired terms. Beverly, you here for back to planning, okay, come on up.
I'd like to let you know that tomorrow night we have a public hearing at six o'clock for One Unit B and B at eight, Drennan Drive. We also have a commercial construction review for the bathrooms at the North Main parking lot. And I also sent you information about variances and waivers not being in our code book correctly, and I ask you to please add it to another agenda. But I found out from Glenna Booth and the city clerk that since that was just a codification error, that they could go back through the codification process and get that corrected without having to redo with an ordinance to put that back in. So that's where that is, so I will not need you to add it to another agenda. And Glenna let me know today that she checked with the county again, and now that they, now they're saying that the mapping for our new zoning map should be finished by the end of April. So hurry up and wait.
Thank you.
Beverly, here's a copy of the information that was added back in. See the code book that you requested?
Thank you.
You're welcome, there you go.
Okay. That would bring us to CAPC, nothing. Hospital, no report, parks, no report, HTC, no report, and cemetery, no report.
Thank you.
That I know of. Which moves us straight into public comments. Come on in and grab a chair. Ms. Teresa DeVito. Oh, there you are, you snuck in the back door, okay.
Hi, good, how are you? Hello. In 2008 and 2010, Eureka Springs was awarded Keep Arkansas Beautiful Shine Award for our efforts to be a green and clean city. Additionally, Eureka Springs earned a 2012 Arkansas Business City of Distinction Award for our green and conservation initiatives. Trolley's tram, city white cleanups, and recycling efforts all play a role in these. With tourist season on our heels, I hope we can all work together and try and come up with ways to progressing towards being a greener and more environmentally sound city. When I think about improvements and solutions to our parking issues, one of the first things that comes to mind is bicycle racks. I believe if we had one or two bicycle racks downtown, it might motivate more locals to ride bicycles, which would free up parking spaces as well as use less fuel, decrease air pollution, and have less traffic. Our public library has just received HTC approval for installation of a bicycle rack. I believe another installed around the courthouse or auditorium would be fantastic. I also think we should consider putting one at the post office, which would need federal approval. If we're able to implement these bike racks, I think it would also be great if we could include them in our city maps and our city website with legends, so that tourists and locals alike know we have them and where they're located. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ashton Shaw. Hey Ashton, come on in.
Hello, members of the city council, my name is Ashton Shaw, and I really can't add much more to what Ms. Teresa just put so greatly, but I believe that people like me, younger who can't drive, would benefit from bike racks because we would be able to bike or ride our bikes down to work and to town, so that we could go to the library or do events like that. And the only other thing is that Adventure Mountain Outfitters owner and welder Denton West has graciously offered to customly build the bike racks that are requested, no cost to the city.
Cool.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown Hostic. Hello, Brian.
Hello, folks.
How are you? Come on in.
Brian and Lil here again. We're just here to provide you, folks, with a little more information in regard to our recent sewage backup at Sherwood Court. At the prompting of Mr. Mitchell, we got a copy of our expense documentation for you to look over if you're interested. There was also a question about whether or not we might want to share it in the expenses. And Lil and I, we wrangled over that quite a bit. And what you won't find on our expenses is the hours that we put in to get in this motel room back into shape. We estimated somewhere between 230 and 240 hours. We're, we figure that's, that's our pie, piece of the sewer pie, right there. So if you see something in the expenses that you think might be out of line, we're certainly open to looking at that again. We've also brought a couple, do you have those expenses? We've also brought a couple of statements from the plumbers that assisted us in this problem. Mr. Joel Walker of Rycard Plumbing and Rich Payne, owner of P and P Plumbing. That's all we just wanted to include for you guys.
Okay, thank you. Do you all want to hang around, you're still on the agenda?
Sure.
Okay, so just grab a chair. Out there, we holler at you when we get time. Okay, that'll take care of public comments. Moves us into unfinished business. Number one would be discussion of Sherwood Court. Okay, Sherwood Court sewer issue, so.
You just ran them off.
Yes, they want to come up, yeah. I told you. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open. Sorry, sorry.
Yes, you know, I spent some time talking with the Hostics and also with Public Works Director, Alan. Dwayne and I were trying to do our best to kind of figure out what happened to start with, you know? What was the cause of this? We received a letter from 2009, which kind of outlines, from the miners, it kind of outlines the third event of this kind that happened to them. And it was determined then that it was the city that had a jetting operation, according to the miners' letter. I haven't actually asked Dwayne this, and Dwayne, you may confirm or not that, but I believe that the city was requested to come out by another occupant upstream because of a blockage, and they jetted, and that's what caused the problem in 2009. When Dwayne and I were talking about this, we tried to figure out what happened, you know? And Dwayne, I believe you said you were going to follow up and make sure that actually no city forces were used in the jetting operation. And one of the, when we were talking about this, one of the things that Dwayne was saying was that, you know, private plumbers have more powerful jets, water jets, than the city's jet. And basically, Dwayne, you can confirm this, I guess, here in a second, but we didn't find that there were, correct, we didn't find that there was any city?
No, there's no evidence that it was ran this time.
Okay.
We weren't notified, we ran it in February after it was open, yes.
Okay, but we did, but Dwayne and I both agree that from a hydraulic standpoint, there was enough pressure, it had to been a jetting operation that caused the issue. And so that leaves only a private plumber for another residence in that area that could have caused that, I mean, in my mind, that's what I'm seeing, could have caused that issue, unless you have anything else to, that you've discovered.
No, I didn't, just with, you know, if it was a, you know, a greater slope, then we could, we could understand if it was that flat and with that amount of volume in that area, like you said, I don't think hydraulically, it couldn't have happened without some help to that extent.
Yeah, I agree, a hundred percent. I mean, Brian, you said it was, well, you could see the ring there was like eighteen inches deep in the bathtubs.
Four bathtubs.
Yeah, probably came up through the toilets, too, yeah.
And blew the rings out, the wax tubes.
So the question is, it doesn't appear, he went through all the tickets for the, for the time, for the city workforces, did you go through the over, the weekend time, too?
We looked at overtime, and, you know, anybody out would have turned overtime, slip in for that area. We have work orders, but it could have happened on the weekend, obviously, and there was no overtime. We couldn't find any evidence and talk to all our crew, so, you know, we're, you know, like you said, obviously, you know, what happened, we don't know till that point, but it did occur, backflow did occur there, obviously.
And that's, so that brings up a point, because in this letter by the miners in 2009, the reason the city was called out was because an upstream residence was having a problem with their sewage. So I, it kind of leads me to believe that there were only, when, when, Dwayne and I looked at this, there's only two, maybe three houses upstream of Sherwood Court, so, that are tied in, right there, correct?
Yeah, there's another line that comes in, tees in there, Sherwood Court on the Glen Street, dead ends back behind them, and, but yeah, that's, it's a low volume, which is not good in itself for keeping itself cleaned out.
So what we're finding is that there's only a couple of houses upstream of Sherwood Court.
Unless, you know, we, there might be a few more tied in, you know, we're not a hundred percent showing our, some of those are shown back, and some over the years, if they came out and rehooked, but it's, we do know it's low flow, we're certain of that, yes.
So, I mean, what, what is your opinion of what happened? I mean, I've already stated, I think it's probably a high-pressure jetting operation from a private plumber.
Well, that's, you said, you know, one of those, you know, what did happen, and of course, obviously, the first thought is, you know, back to us, and that's when, you know, someone should check with us immediately anyway. You know, going back, that's where we, you know, it supposedly happened in January, we were out checking in February, we didn't know to the extent of the damage till March. So for some reason, obviously, we weren't informed of that, but, but yeah, I, I'm thinking at some point, there had to be something that forced it out, and we're not, we're not disputing the fact there was probably a clog in that sewer main, but we have no evidence that we were the ones that forced it to that point. And, and with that setup there, as we know back from '09, with that tap being that low, it's going to go there, that's the first place it goes. And they, they thought they had protected it, and no one knew till we came in this time, we diatested, camered the line, found where the tap came out, and they have now protected with a backwater valve. So, but it was wide open, and no one knew that at the time. But, you know, like you said, we still have the mystery of what happened in January.
Right, so we don't know what, we don't know who caused it, it was caused, we don't, we know that the city didn't cause it. We're ninety-nine percent sure it wasn't the city, a hundred percent?
Correctly, yeah, well, it's a jetter, no, we have no evidence of that.
So we think it's probably a private plumber for private residence. We don't, we don't have any evidence that there was actually city involvement in it. So one of the things we looked at was, well, we looked at two, we looked at the cause, and then we looked at how, the solution. You currently have a backflow preventer on that other discovered line, correct? As you indicated to us. So at this point, I think Dwayne and I said, well, you know, that's not a real good situation either, because we don't have a lot of fall there, and that could cause backup in your line and all sorts of stuff, if it's not watched constantly. So we looked at, a potential solution would be to actually take it down to another, to take that around and downhill to another main. And there are, there are two other mains, you know, your other, other parts of your property are hooked up to the other parts of, or other mains, sewer mains. I don't know where to go with this, quite frankly, I mean, we're just, we're not finding a lot of fault of the city, other than we, you know, pretty much have a clogged line, we did have clogged line, but that's usually taken care of by city forces. You guys didn't know about it until you got back from vacation, and so something happened while y'all were gone, and we don't know who, what, when, or why. Yes, ma'am?
We're not convinced of it, I mean, we were gone, we left and went for Christmas, came back, repacked, left again, so it could have.
Did you get closer to the microphone?
Sorry. So it could have happened in the end of December, we didn't get back until February 5th, so it could have happened the first of February. So I would like to see those records from the city on jetting, because I'm thinking that the only person in town that has that big of a power jetter is Richie with P and P, and I think he would have told us. I mean, that's just my thought.
Dwayne, is that, is that correct, are there other plumbers?
Uh, Roger Ritter down here, some people have been on all that, but we, we have no, like I said, we've looked at our records, there's not, there's not a work order, there's not a call in from another individual, and nobody has, in that area, said, yeah, I had trouble and I called in. We're not saying, you know, hey, we're, like, there's some cover up here, we're honestly saying that we have no record, we weren't over there, our guys weren't there, so. That doesn't mean that there wasn't a blockage in that line, obviously, so, but.
Well, I mean, we're concentrating on January, and we, our last guess were mid-December, and so I'm not, I mean, I don't know exactly when we went into those motel rooms, it could have been, but, you know, we were back and forth going for Christmas and all that and back, so anyway.
Dwayne, could we check for those times that Ms. Hostic is?
Yes, we, you know, we're not, we, one of them is the work orders are placed per street, but yeah, we, we haven't looked far as overtime past the timeframe, obviously, so we could look back into last year and see if something overlapped, but our understanding was, it was January was the timeframe.
When would be the cutoff?
Our last guess was probably December, the weekend of December 15th was our last guess, and then, of course, it takes us some time to, you know, so.
So if we went back to December 15th, I mean, just, just to be sure, I mean.
That would work.
Okay, could we do that?
We can do that, yes, no problem.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell.
So you're saying from somewhere around December 15th until February, you were never in those rooms?
No, we closed down, I mean, our last guess was February 15th, uh, December 15th, the weekend of December 15th.
Okay.
And then, yes, we're in those rooms cleaning them.
Yeah, okay.
And shut off the hot water heater, drain the hot water heater, things like that, but then we left, trying to think, we went to Frederick, Oklahoma for Christmas with Brian's folks, came back, and we left our house on December 30th.
And didn't come back till February? Probably right before Christmas, we weren't in those rooms. And when I came to see you the first time with the complaint, what was the work going on at that white two-story house across from that, your road, I guess?
They were replacing a sewer line.
Who was?
I don't know, there was a back hole out there, replacing the sewer line of the house, it's right out of our office, that Charlie Wormnest owns.
We think they were just reconnecting to the sewer.
Well, I haven't talked to him.
So that wasn't from your stuff?
Pardon me?
That wasn't from your sewer stuff?
No, I don't know.
Because that's what I saw, too, and assumed it was from what had happened with you.
That wasn't the city working on that a month ago? Do you, had you contacted this people or that plumber to see if they were doing anything, like maybe they had a clog and they jetted it and then came back and replaced?
Well, we can check with them.
We've just been hearing recently that there's, there seems to be a lot of sewer problems in that neighborhood. So, you know, we don't have really any names or anything, but that just seems to be where. Was that work going on while you were gone, when you came back, that work? No, that started after we got back. After you got back? But you don't know anything that was done before then by those people? No.
Not that we're aware of. And Dolores, that lives across the street from the White House, when we were doing ours, came over and she said her, her stuff was backing up.
Okay.
And she'd called somebody, and then the bank, the teller at Community First Bank, when I deposited the check from the insurance company, she said, I live down the hill from you, and mine's been backing up.
Dwayne, question. When a, when a private plumber comes into town that evidently was doing something with the main, do they have to let you know?
Yeah, that's, if, if, you know, if it's on the private side, no, that's Bobby Ray, but if, you know, like, like this incident when Richie got over and got in the main, he didn't know he was in it till he did stuck a camera in, but he had already went in it.
Yeah.
At that point, he's out and it's back, and that was, you know, he's, he's notifying our guys, that they, they, most of the plumbers work really well with us, and they won't get in the main, you know, they're accepting a lot of liability there themselves.
But this, this group that was working on this house across the way, did they, you don't remember, they contacted you, did they?
No, no, and there's, there's, there are several groups that try to avoid us in this town also, yes.
Thank you.
Just so, just so you know, Dwayne, yeah, because I live back there, I saw them out there, and they were working like, they had the street blocked off and everything.
Well, they had torn up, they had cut out asphalt out of the street.
See, that's, that's needs to be permitted through us, which we didn't do, so that's, that's illegal at that point, it has to have a permit on the street cut.
So at this time, we've pretty much exhausted everything we can do here tonight. Well, Dwayne's going to go back to December 15th and look for that, and if you're so gracious as to ask your neighbor if they jetted prior to replacing their sewer line, we'll have more information, but right now.
Find out if you did the work.
Excuse me.
Yeah, we'll find out.
Yeah, but right now, you know, I don't know that we can go any farther with this until we get some more information.
Any further, Mr. Perkypile?
Oh, I agree, I move to, to put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Second.
Further discussion?
With Public Works Director, present for, to discuss the time.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, post. So, carry.
Thank you, guys.
Do we need Dwayne anymore, he can go home? Anybody else? Need Dwayne here for any reason?
Do I get to lament about my budget?
Yes.
Maybe next time.
Thank you, Dwayne, I appreciate you coming.
Better run, better run.
You can go ahead and go home. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that brings us to number two, discussion of town hall meeting. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open.
We've had our preliminary priority setting, we've preliminarily identified six priorities, it's time to go ahead and probably set the town hall meeting, get a little more information. After that, be sure that those are the six, they're firmly set, and there's nothing, be no changes, and then we can go back to those priorities and clean up and finalize action steps, the timelines, work with Lonnie on the financial issues, and really turn those priorities into, to a working document, so. If anybody has any suggestions, but it seems like May would be an awfully good time.
Mr. DeVito.
If you're talking about a town hall meeting, no. Just what it takes to inform the public, get the conversation started in the community, we have not even set a format for the town hall meeting, so that's going to require, you know, I'm willing to volunteer to work with Mr. Perkypile on setting up format for this meeting. I seem to remember you volunteering once upon a time to provide music, but I'm not going to hold you to that one. But, no, it, it's important, two things, that we have a format for this meeting, we know what we're doing, we know where we're going, but most importantly is to get the community involved, and that's going to take time, so May is just too close. I would look to sometime, you know, in the first part of June or somewhere in there, but I really hesitate to set a date today until we can get some of the nuts and bolts worked up on, what's the format for this town hall meeting, what's it going to entail? You know, who's going to be on stage? There's a variety of questions we need to have answers to before, before we do this.
Ms. Silla, go ahead.
I don't have a clear picture of what the town is supposed to contribute in this town hall meeting. I mean, I can understand us getting priorities together and working out budgets and so forth, but what is the town expected to contribute here? More ideas, or to change things, or what?
Well.
Yes, go ahead.
We're, we're entering into, both with planning, a master plan for the city, and, you know, if we're talking town hall meeting, that usually entails a Q and A session. There may be a diamond out there that somebody possesses that we have no idea about. And just the discussion, as we discussed ideas at the table here, another idea pops up that none of us may have had, but the exchange of ideas may create a new idea. And that's the dynamic that I'd like to see in a town hall meeting, that, you know, people express their wants and desires for the community, you never know what somebody's going to come up with.
Well, we've established, you know, preliminary priorities list with a workshop. Why don't we have another workshop, kind of discuss the format, what we want to do with it, and then we can bring it forward.
I'd make a motion to set a workshop for the town hall meeting.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side.
You going to pick a date?
Time of day?
Well, that's Diane's.
Miss the calendar.
TBA, then, here. All right, no further on that one, move on to number three, it'd be the third reading of the ordinance 2178. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Perkypile, second. Floor's open. Mr. DeVito.
I would like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2178 on its third reading by title only.
Your second?
Second.
Second.
Need your roll call on that one.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Six zero.
An ordinance amending chapter 4.44 Outdoor Sales of Eureka Springs Municipal Code.
Mr. DeVito? Move to approve ordinance number 2178 on its third reading.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Third read, okay, sorry. Suspend rules and third read review. Okay.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yep.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Six zero.
An ordinance amending chapter 4.44 Outdoor Sales of Eureka Springs Municipal Code. Is already done? Okay. All right. See, yeah.
That's the fourth reading, it took work for eight.
Yeah. Okay. Third, third pass. We skip number four. Where's this, number five, limo workshop review?
Motion to discuss. Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Schneider.
Okay, at our workshop, basically what we came up with was to take the taxi ordinance, add a description of the jumbo cab, what that meant in regards to taxi or jumbo taxi. We need to add the penalties, spell out what the penalties will be for not complying with the ordinance. Um, and to write a separate ordinance for limousines, covering description and penalties and so on and so forth. It needs basically the same stuff as a taxi, but it is a totally different animal, so it needs its own ordinance. Insurance has to be, we have to make sure that insurance is, requirements are added to the ordinances. Um, and that's what we came up with. Now, were we supposed to ask you to do this or to look into it or what did you know about? I can't remember. Were we supposed to ask him to do this? Okay. So basically what we, what we would like the city attorney to do, if he doesn't yet know already, on the limousine thing, if you would do us a limousine ordinance that is basically the same as the taxi ordinance, only with the limousine description and requirements and whatnot.
Okay. I would ask if one of you that were at the workshop would act as a liaison for the workshop since I was not at the workshop.
Me? You guys? What?
Mr. DeVito?
When we got around to the limousines, we talked about a, a delay between, uh, a request for a limousine and the actual arrival time. And then by the hour rental, no, no fees attached to that, but also a penalty for uh, breaking the ordinance. Uh, then basic definition of what a limousine is. And, you know, personally, I felt that not to incorporate the limousine into the taxi ordinance because it is a somewhat different animal and we have other ordinances governing everything from step-on tour guides to, uh, you know, horse-drawn carriages. So I felt like the limousine is more in line with that and that not to incorporate the limousine ordinance into the taxi ordinance to separate the two.
Mr. DeWitt.
One of, one of the big things is on the limousine. Um, it's got to be shown to be totally different from taxi, so someone with a limo can't just go around town acting as a taxi. So that, that's one of the crucial requirements we need on there.
Mr. McClung?
Um, I think before it's done, I think either me with, through Mr. Weaver or directly with us, I haven't contacted the police chief, but I, you know, done it this way, it seemed like it's going to be extremely difficult to regulate. I mean, how are you going to know? You know?
Well, isn't that kind of up to the police?
No, not really.
Warranted evidence that would be regulating it? I mean, it's not.
According to however we set it up. So I, you know, I'm just, I have a real problem in my mind how that's going to happen.
You would probably have to set all the regs on what you want to check if from that end of the ordinance into A ordinance or the ordinance.
Okay.
So there'd be some criteria to follow through on.
I just assume because it was on the road.
First, you have to make sure it's legal before you put it into the ordinance.
Are you, are you listening to this?
So you're not discriminating there.
Well, it's like other ordinances that we have. I mean, we, we rely on the good graces of people. It's just like prohibiting feeding the deer. I mean, you're going to get somebody that, you know, is going to call in a complaint and that's when the police step in to, to check it out. I mean, that's, you know, we have a small police force, we're not able to be everywhere at all times and you just have to understand that the overwhelming majority of people are law-abiding citizens and, uh, you know, somebody will point out to the police that somebody's, as, has happened in the past, that somebody's disobeying the ordinance and that's where it'll start.
So you've gotten all this and you'll be able to do it and see what's legal and whatever?
I still would like one person out of your group to.
I'll volunteer.
Be, be somebody I can call to get clarification.
I'll volunteer as long as it's not in April.
Well, I'll be here, so I'll volunteer. She's at, she's leaving town for the next two weeks, so.
Well, it may not get done in the next two weeks depending on how my eyes improve. I had surgery on both eyes last week and.
Oh.
I'm not seeing the best right tonight, but we will see.
Well, I'll have my cell, so that works.
I think also in this meeting, uh, the reason we wanted to separate limousine and taxi was because limousine is not a public utility, it's a service business and there wasn't any necessity for a public hearing and or certificate of necessity and all that sort of thing, all those hoops that you jump through by state ordinance for taxis. A limousine is simply a service. And I think that, it seems to me that that's what we covered in that meeting, although I don't know.
Yeah, that was a big part.
Mr. Perkypile?
Well, and that's why we have the addition of the jumbo taxi description in the taxi service ordinance. Because we have two taxi services that have, uh, limousines that operate as jumbo taxis. And so we need to have, that's what we want to do is clear that up. Uh, if we have any other limo services that come to town, there's one currently, uh, then they need to either operate under the limo ordinance or the taxi ordinance. And they'd only operate under the taxi ordinance if they had, if they had another cab, if there was a small unit that operated as a cab also.
Anybody else? Okay, no further?
You're good?
Okay. Moves us on to number six. The discussion of planning commission membership ordinance.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. We have been provided, uh, ordinance here without a number that reads exactly as we've discussed. I don't remember exactly, I, the wording, if I make the motion, I think it's assigned a number.
Place it on its first reading.
Place it on its first reading.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We open for discussion?
Oh, yeah. We're going to sign the number first reading.
The ordinance number will be 2179. An ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code subsection 13.04.02A regarding the membership of the planning commission, whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the current planning commission membership requirements and whereas there is a need to be able to keep a more complete membership and whereas it has been determined that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the membership requirements. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, that subsection 13.04.02A of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended to read as follows. A, the commission shall be composed of seven members, of which no more than two shall hold any other municipal office or appointment except membership on the Board of Adjustment or a joint planning agency. If there are two members who hold other municipal office or appointment, only one of them may be a member of the City Council. Section two, severability clause. In the event that any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter as a whole, or any part of provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional. And the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, code, section, or chapter shall remain in effect. Section three, repeal clause. All ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeWitt?
Move to approve ordinance number 2179 on its first reading.
Second.
Second. Now's discussion.
Yeah. Mr. Perkypile?
I'd like to ask Ms. Mr. Weaver, uh, the definition of, uh, or appointment, does that include somebody who works for the city, like say for Public Works or the Fire Department or EMS or something like that?
It should.
I mean, so we, we're, we're including any other city employee that wanted to.
Yes.
To, to serve. Okay.
Any further?
So a vote on approval of the first reading?
Yes, yes. It had to be a roll call since it's.
No.
It's not suspended. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moves us into new business. Number one's been postponed until November the 13th. Brings us to number two, is a discussion of demo by neglect. Floor is open?
Move to discuss. Second.
Now the floor is open, sorry.
Evidently in the, the past councils, somewhere in the not-too-distant past, there was a ordinance that was drafted demolition by neglect and I don't have to have it with me. It evidently put a lot of emphasis on the HDC, uh, involvement in a process to identify neglected and buildings and to, for the city to take action against them. It would, we have in this, within the city limits here, obviously, the building on North Main that seems to get a lot of discussion, that used to have a blue tarp on the hole in the roof that now doesn't, and that the siding on the west side is falling off, et cetera, et cetera. Likewise, if you turn on Mill Hollow Road, if you can get over the bridge before it collapses, on the left-hand side, there is a burned-out building that is, has collapsed, that's been there for, there's no telling how long. If you drive a little bit farther down that road and you happen to look to the right, there is a, an exterior hoarder beyond belief in, that, that has taken over, that, that just the, just the yard alone and everything is, is horrendous. So there is, and I'm sure that's, there's many more than that in this city where there is opportunity. And I, I do understand that, that sometimes money's involved and people doesn't have money. And this is not in any way, shape, nor form picking on people because they, uh, their house isn't pretty. That's not it at all. We're, we're really talking about safety factors here with, with homes that are severely neglected. Hopefully, potentially, we could even look at the exterior of homes and the yards and the maintenance and the way they are when they have reached a, a serious point of neglect. Uh, it, it affects the neighborhood for, for individuals to allow their property to deteriorate to such a point. So I would like for us to consider continuing to explore, uh, that past ordinance, possibly looking at more involvement by planning and zoning with discussion with HDC to be sure that it's not a contributing property. And then possibly with discussions with the attorney, I'm sure there would have to be a public hearing at some point on it, et cetera. But I would like, hopefully, that we would move in council to get a very workable ordinance that allows the city to move forward in a timely manner and take care of neglected properties.
Anybody else? Mr. Perkypile?
I also looked at, well, those properties that you're talking about. But I looked at another one on Alexander that is a, it's a mess, got three cars been there, they're dead, you know, they're all full of trash, house is full of, I mean, literally full of trash. Porch is collapsed in front and back, roof is collapsing. Um, and unfortunately, it, uh, there's always extenuating circumstances with these, these buildings with ownership and placing a burden on them, on some of these owners who are elderly for the most part, um, and apparently won't release them to younger members of their family to, to deal with properly. So I think we do need a, an ordinance addressing this. I think there's another house on, I won't give the address, but maybe, well, I won't say until we actually get out maybe with planning and take a look at that. But, uh, those are, the, these, these are eyesores and they're also public health and public safety issues. Uh, the one on North Main, it could collapse, probably won't, but it could. It's rotting right now as we see it. It's very close to the street, a lot of people walk by it. It's extremely, it's four feet, within six feet of a state highway. So definitely could be an obstruction. Currently, all we have to address it is this, uh, chapter 5.04, under Health and Sanitation, Title V, Maintenance of Real Property. And this just doesn't appear to have enough meat in it to, enough, enough in here to really address these demolition by neglect. And there might be some people that would like to have that, you know, to be able to demolish a building. Because I do realize that my neighbor next door could have demolished, should have demolished his building, but he chose to build it, I mean, rebirth it from the inside out. I mean, he took everything from the foundation and just, you just didn't even notice it was happening. He took one wall at a time and raised the, he did all sorts of things and built an identical structure out of all new materials. So for him, it would have been beneficial to have a demolition by neglect ordinance because he could have just demolished it and started new. It cost him probably twice as much to do it this way.
Mr. DeVitt?
And I'd also, uh, like to see if we could get Bobby Ray to bring us up to speed on what he's up against trying to deal with these properties.
Mr. Schneider?
Um, if I remember correctly from years ago, when this first came up as a council item, one of the reasons they were going after demolition by neglect because we actually do have some people that live here that buy property for the future value and purposely ignore the building, counting the days until it falls down, which is not cool. Um, one house in particular was of historic counting on our historic what you call it thing. Uh, and was, he was forced to take care of it. That's what actually started this years ago. We need to have something in there in regards to that, so people can't buy. to that, so people can't buy a property and then ignore it, so all they have left is land without having to go to the expense of removing, or replacing, or renovating, or whatever it would take. We need to have something in the ordinance that covers that.
Mr. McLean.
I was on the council when that ordinance came up, but I cannot remember what the objection to it was, and I remember that there were people that objected to it, to the point where we actually did not, we have a petition circulated, and we had a vote. Okay, so what was the main problem with the populace? Does anybody remember that?
Except the one person, I do not remember.
Well, one person cannot swear in the entire election.
That's insane, I don't remember what the whole thing was.
Do you remember, James, what?
I'd like to know what else was on the ballot in that election.
Was this even a ballot item, or was it just the council?
Yes, this was, didn't we pass it, and then, yes, Beverly remembers, we passed it, and some citizens were upset, and they circulated a petition. We had a special election, and it was voted down, but why? What was the objection? I, I think if we know that in, in advance, we can avoid that this time around.
Mr. Burke.
I can tell you what I remember.
Yeah?
That a lot of people felt that if a lien were put on their property by the city, that they would be in double jeopardy and not be able to borrow money to do the repairs. The bank would not loan money on property that had a lien. That's just what I remember.
Mr. Mitchell, head in there.
I'll defer to Mr. Burke. Well, my understanding of the lien process is that there's only a lien placed if there's any work done by the city, and the city would go there to clean it up, or demolish it, or to remove trash, or dead cars, or whatever happened to be there. So, that, I mean, addressing that issue now, moving forward to now, I don't think we have that same issue. I mean, I think we have a better understanding of the lien process. You know, it's not, we're, no lien will be attached to a property before, now, Mr. Weaver, correct me if I'm wrong, before any work has been done, because that's usually when you attach a lien to a real property.
Yes, you have valid debt to collect a lien.
Mr. DeVito.
I'm not a big fan of workshops, however, it, it belies that this one is going to require one briefly, so that we can come up with a draft ordinance that will be successful and, and do what we want it to do, and not be as in, just do what needs to be done. So, we'd like to make a motion that we ask Diane to establish a workshop for, and I really don't like the name demolition by neglect, but I have a strange feeling that that's the name of it, for some other reason that I don't know, but that we have a workshop for demolition by neglect.
Second.
Lady Sagan.
I think originally, this was Glenn Booth's baby, and she spent a lot of time working on this and researching it, so whatever we have, where we're going to get together and discuss this, I think we should ask Glenna if she can't be present to give us her input, because I think she knows more about it than anybody else.
Mr. McLean.
You also have, you know, the historic district commissioner, which I guess she can pretty much represent the HDC in that respect, and be involved in that. You've also got two different things, you've got the historic district, and then outside the historic district, and, you know, one is gonna be, I would think, more restrictive than the other because of, of, of their value historically, you know, where they, they may be more inclined to be saved, whereas something that's outside the historic district boundaries may not be, you know, so critical if it is in such disrepair.
Mr. DeVito.
And, and I'd like to also have Bobby Ray at that workshop too, because I think that would be important.
Mr. Burke, go ahead, somebody, yeah.
Is there any way, if a building is on the historic register, or whatever, that it can get decommissioned? And I'm thinking specifically of the Ice House on Main Street. I mean, the thing is, at the point where, at this point, anybody who wants to buy that property and develop it, has to build inside the existing shell in order to, in order to satisfy the requirements for being an historic structure, and is there any way you can get a building out from and under that, so you can do something about it?
Well, that's part of what we should be discussing in the workshop also, is preventative measures to the point where we're not having to deal with demolition by neglect, that there, if it's a contributing property, then we have a responsibility to, the historic nature of our community, to try and stem the problem before we talk about demolition. So, that, that's also a topic that needs to be added.
And so, that, the preventative measures would be enforced by our billing inspector? I mean, that, that's basically, that's all we have.
Right.
Okay. Do we want to invite planning?
Yes. Yes.
I, I, I think we should. I think this should, this is important enough that we should have everybody on board.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Mr. Weaver.
If you want to look at a city that, or at least in the past, has done a lot of this, that has a historic district, you want to look at North Little Rock. They did an amazing job of working on this about eight, nine, 10 years ago. They have, and they have a significant historic district that they are attending, among, and at least at one time, their city attorney at that time was willing to come around the state and make presentations. He actually did come up here at one time and presented some information that either maybe to the planning commissioner or the HDC one, and he might, if he's still doing that, be willing to come up and talk about some of the things that they did. He also gave some lectures to the municipal league at one time, on regard to how to fix the problem, especially where you're dealing with houses that are inside and outside of a historic district.
Mr. Burke.
Mr. Weaver, what was that gentleman's name?
I will have to look it up, I can't remember right off the top of my head.
You might ask Butch Berry, because he's very conversive about North Little Rock and the historic district.
Anybody else? Okay. All in favor of the workshop, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Moves us to number three, which would be discussion of smoking in establishments that serve food.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Mitchell.
I asked that this be put on the agenda because I received multiple emails, surprisingly, even an email from, from visitors from New Mexico and Arizona that visit four to five times a year. And, and then in doing some further research, I also received phone calls and, and people stopping me and, and asking about it, and I said, yes, I would ask that it go on the agenda, but at current, there is a bill, House Bill 2119, moving its way somewhere through the legislature down in Little Rock, it's called, for an act to be entitled, "An Act to Prohibit Smoking in All Public Places and for Other Purposes." Based on the fact that the General Assembly of the State of the Arkansas is currently working on this, I move to table this discussion.
Second.
Second.
I also wanted to add, during our research, the state of Arkansas has strict guidelines that are being followed by everyone in Eureka, and that is, if there is smoking, there is no one under 21 allowed in the room, and it, as far as the Health Department is concerned, it comes down to personal choice, be it you, the consumer, or the owner, but anywhere there's smoking, no one under 21 is permitted, so that is covered until we finally get the state thing.
We have a motion to postpone. Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Moving along. Moves us to number four, be the parking lot regulations ordinance. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. I was asked to put this on the agenda.
Go for it.
It's on the agenda.
Well, so, what's the problem?
Which ordinance is this? Is this 2155? Is that, that's rates with regard to certain, no, sorry, wrong one.
This will be chapter 8.48. This will be the, just changing of the wording in the ordinance, to reflect that in section 8.4802, short-term parking costs, any person desiring to park in a short-term parking lot owned or operated by the city shall deposit the proper amount-